Mr. Vella, are you ready to kick things off?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I apologize for the delay there. I was, uh, my microphone was not working, but it's ten o'clock and the meeting is recording and I believe that we do have a quorum. Uh, Mr. Pennington, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Let's get this thing started. I hereby call to order this meeting of the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is ten A.M. With those commissioners that are in attendance, please identify themselves and state as to whether they are here in person or via phone or via Google meets.
This is Joe Pennington. I'm participating by phone and Google meets.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am Scott Fletcher. I am participating via telephone. And we will hope to see Commissioner Feinstein at some point in the proceedings. Uh, let's press on. Um, Mr. Vella, is Director Johnson with us by chance?
Uh, yes, sir. She is present.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Director, welcome. Um, to everyone else, our new director of the Department of Gaming, Jackie Johnson, is, I think, a perfect fit for what we do. She comes from a, uh, family involved in freestyle and Olympic wrestling. Uh, she knows what we do, uh, and, and we're really happy to have her. We appreciate you joining us, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to be here.
Let's press on. B one is our new business, uh, pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Alonso Alexander for a two thousand twenty-three amateur MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Alexander's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Alexander is, um, oh, excuse me, I, here he is. Um, so Mr. Alexander competed last year, um, and, and since twenty nineteen, actually, uh, as an amateur, and he, uh, has done very well with a record of three and O. Uh, he has submitted every, uh, everything necessary for us to go through with this approval. Uh, he did, um, explain to me what his current training regimen is, and it looks like he trains five days a week, usually one to three hours a day. Uh, his training consists of jiu-jitsu twice a week, sparring, uh, weekly, boxing. My apologies, sir, we were getting some echo. Um, and he says he feels confident and ready for his upcoming bout, and he has not experienced any recent injuries. Uh, now, I, I will note that, uh, Mr. Al- Alexander's bout is scheduled for April eighth. Um, he was not able to get all medical requirements submitted to us. He has an appointment scheduled for later in the month, uh, this month, and so I would ask that, um, we approve his license contingent upon us receiving all medical requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. We appreciate how thorough, uh, you vet these applications. It helps us greatly. Um, Commissioner Pennington, thoughts, questions regarding Mr. Alexander's application?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would just like for, uh, Mr. Alexander to, uh, let us know, uh, uh, Mr. Vella has already told us his training schedule, but, uh, what his interest is in continuing to compete as a fighter over age thirty-six.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Alexander, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Would you please speak to that?
Yes, my, my intention is I want to go probe. I want to try to just make a, an indent in the, in the fighting game, put Arizona on the map, and just, just keep, just keep grinding.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
You're welcome.
Um, I have no further questions. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, that we grant a two thousand twenty-three amateur MMA combatant license to Mr. Alonso Alexander.
Uh, Commissioner, can we make that pursuant to appropriate medical showing up?
Uh, certainly. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and that would be contingent on the appropriate medicals being completed, uh, prior to the event.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Alexander. We look forward to March eighth.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just for the record, I will be getting my medicals done this coming weekend.
Please do, as soon as possible. The better, sooner the better. Thank you. Take care. B two is pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Mohammed Wada for a two thousand twenty-three amateur MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Wada's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wada is thirty-seven years old. Um, he did compete last year, um, in the same, uh, with the same promotion, Rise of the Prospects. Um, and he let me know of his training regimen. He said that he trains, uh, typically two to three hours a, a day, um, and two to three sessions, or two, three hours a day, as well as two to three separate sessions, uh, per day. Uh, he said he trains six days a week, Monday through Saturday, and rests on Sundays. Um, he spars once a week, uh, for, for MMA and boxing, and then he runs two to three times a week, um, and does jiu-jitsu three to four times a week. Uh, he does feel confident that he'll, uh, show up as the best version of himself on fight night. Um, he said that he has not experienced any recent injuries, and, um, ultimately, it looks to me as though he is healthy and ready to compete, so, uh, I do recommend his approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Um, one question. That Rise of the Prospects event is when?
April eighth in Tucson.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioner Pennington, the, the MMA world is coming your way, so.
I know. Will you be able to join us?
I'm gonna make sure I'm down there. Yeah, yeah. I've spent a lot of time in Tucson. It'll be good to get back, yeah. Uh, but let's talk about Mr. Wada's application. Commissioner, thoughts, questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions for Mr. Wada.
Okay, and I, I too find myself in the same spot. Uh, the chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, that we grant a, uh, two thousand twenty-three, uh, amateur combatant license as a renewal license for Mr. Mohammed Wada.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Wada.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Best of luck. Uh, B three is also pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The new license application submitted by Mr. Sampson Polkinghorn for a two thousand twenty-three amateur MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Polkinghorn's application, please?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Polkinghorn, uh, is thirty-eight years old, and he, uh, this would be his amateur debut, um, and ultimately, I believe Mr. Polkinghorn was gonna compete last year, um, but his fight fell through or something on the last Rise of the Prospects car, and therefore, here he is now. Uh, I will say that, uh, he did submit everything to us very timely, and based upon those, uh, documents, he's healthy to compete. Um, uh, he also informed me of his, uh, training regimen, which varies from one to, one and a half to three hours a day. He trains six days a week. Um, he said that on Saturdays is, uh, morning cardio, and then, um, rest and recovery day on Sunday. Uh, he said on Sundays, he, oh, I'm sorry, rests on Sundays, and, and sometimes does cardio, which consists of one and a half miles. Uh, on Mondays, he does cardio as well as, um, training, uh, mixed martial arts training and Muay Thai. Uh, and then from there, it looks as though he basically has a very similar, um, uh, training regimen to what we would see, consists of cardio, sparring. He went very detailed. So I'm just gonna summarize, um, and he mixes up with different, um, exercises for different various body parts. As you can see in his photo, there he is in very fit, physical condition. Um, and he says he has experienced no recent injuries, and he's ready to compete.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Do you have a, uh, suggestion on how we should handle this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, based upon, uh, his submission to us, I believe that, uh, Mr. Polkinghorn, um, should be approved.
Thank you. And again, thank you for, uh, your thorough vetting of these folks. It's very important to us. Um, is there an event that Mr. Polkinghorn is hoping to be a part of?
Uh, yes, that is the April eighth, uh, Rise of the Prospects event as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And do you have any thoughts about matchmaking? I just, uh, uh, first timer at thirty-eight, I just want us to be careful, careful with matchmaking, of course, too.
Yes, sir, of course, and, uh, with his, uh, let me just pull up his, his, uh, profile here. Uh, he is, um, matched with, with Michael Mankel, who I could, uh, pull up his, his, uh, record. Just one moment. Michael also, uh, participated. He is, he is one and O, uh, at, at the Rise of the Prospects. Um, but I, I still feel this would be a very good battle overall.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Mr. Pennington, your thoughts?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to hear from Mr. Polkinghorn, uh, the types of discipline, uh, MMA disciplines that he is most comfortable with. What does, what does he work on? What does he practice mostly? Or is he available?
I think he had to, he's not in the meeting.
Uh, sir, it appears that Mr. Polkinghorn, um, had to work this morning and is not in the meeting. He won't be available.
Okay, well, given, uh, the matchmaking and, uh, what you have provided us, uh, Mr. Vella, I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, Mr. Polkinghorn's application, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I too find myself in the same spot. Uh, chair would be open to a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS five dash two-two-seven, excuse me, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, that we grant a new two thousand twenty-three MMA combatant license to Mr. Sampson Polkinghorn.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Polkinghorn. Again, we look forward to April eighth. Item B four is pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six. The new license application submitted by Mr. Rodolfo Hernandez Montoya for a two thousand twenty-three professional boxer license. Mr. Vella, let's talk about Mr. Montoya's application, please.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Montoya, as you can see, is, is quite experienced in the, in the ring. Um, he's been doing this for quite some time. Uh, he's thirty-six years old, and, uh, he, based upon his, his application, I do feel comfortable with, with his ability to compete. Um, I will note that, uh, Mr. Montoya, he, he is from out of the country, and so he had to arrive here and get his medicals done. My understanding is that they were completed, uh, already this week. We're just waiting on the results, uh, to be submitted to us. Um, but he is scheduled to compete on, uh, the upcoming March eighteenth, um, event, and so this would be a recommendation of approval based upon, or well, contingent upon his, uh, medicals being submitted. Um, now, as far as his, uh, training regimen goes, he trains six days a week, two and a half to three hours a day. Um, and his, his training breaks down, uh, three to four days of sparring, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and sometimes on Saturday. He runs all six days, uh, forty-five minutes to an hour of, um, and then strength training for one hour, um, six days a week as well. Uh, he says he feels good about the upcoming, uh, event, and he has not experienced any recent injuries.
And his medicals came in this morning.
Okay. And, sir, I would like to make a correction to my previous statement. Uh, I would just advise that his medicals did, uh, come in this morning, and that he is good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. That's, that's good news. Um, one question as an aside, are we having, are, are there turnaround times? Some medicals getting longer for some reason?
Uh, sir, well, it just, it, it depends. Obviously, that's something that, so, the forty-eight hour, uh, rule, uh, is in place, and, and forty-eight hours, that is from, essentially, the forty-eight hours is, uh, four-thirty on the day that begins, uh, forty-eight hours prior to the scheduled event. So in this case, medicals would all be due on Thursday. Um, obviously, for an overage fighter, um, the, the meeting can, can make things a little tough to, to get it done in time. Um, and, and in this case, obviously, he's from out of the country, so the promoter had to bring him in, uh, a little early to make sure the medicals could get done in time for the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm just a fan of having all our ducks in a row, our cheese cross eyes dotted, so, uh, anything we do to get timely medicals is critical, obviously. Uh, Commissioner Pennington, let's talk about Mr. Montoya's application. What thoughts have you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, a question that I have for, uh, the executive director is when was the last time Mr. Montoya was knocked out? If I'm reading the record right, it looks like he's got thirty wins, twenty of those were knockouts, eleven defeats, ten of those were knockouts, and then one draw.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just curious as to when, uh, his last, uh, knockout occurred.
So his, uh, he, he, his last bout was in, uh, August of two thousand twenty-two, and that was a loss by TKO. Prior to that, uh, an official knockout, uh, he lost, uh, that was in, uh, October of two thousand twenty.
Okay, so there's been quite a bit of time lapse since, uh, either the technical knockout or the, uh, the knockout occurred.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Fine. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Now, you raise a good point, though, Commissioner, and we do want to protect these folks, so I would ask, uh, the executive director to keep an eye on the situation. He is scheduled to fight an undefeated Danny Forrest, so, uh, uh, please, let's keep an eye on this one. Um, I have no further questions. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, that we grant a new two thousand twenty-three professional boxing license to Mr. Rofaldo Hernandez Montoya.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion, a motion that I am going to second. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations to Mr. Montoya. Let's press on. B five is pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight A, B, and E, and five dash two-two-nine, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Sampson Lukovitz, doing business as Sampson Boxing LLC for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license. Mr. Lukovitz, are you with us by chance? Take that as a no, Mr. Vella. Will you speak to his application, please?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I, I do not see him on, but then again, he may be on by telephone. I, I'm not sure. But, but what I'll say is that, uh, we're obviously pleased to, to have seen him renewing his, his application here. As you know, in years prior, he's co-promoted with TGB, and they, they brought together, um, some pretty good events here in Arizona. Um, based upon the investigative memo that I, I shared with, uh, the commission, uh, he does present a stable financial position, and, uh, there are no concerns on my end. I do recommend his approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Yes, I can speak to the history with, uh, Mr. Lukowicz. We've had some spectacular events. They've been well attended and highly entertaining, and it made my day to see him back looking for a license. Uh, he did recently sign two boxers, two undefeated boxers out of Hermosillo, Omar Gómez and Christian Beretta, who, gosh, I'd love to build a, uh, card around that and let them have their U.S. debuts here in the state of Arizona. I was hoping to talk to him about it at this meeting, but, uh, so be it. We'll make that happen another time. But, yeah, I have nothing but praise for his events, and I'm really pleased he's coming back to Arizona in whatever way, shape, or form. I know he also has David Benavides, David Plant, coming up here very shortly in Las Vegas, so he, he may have bigger fish to fry than to chat with us right now, but, uh, I have nothing but the highest, uh, regard for his cards, and I'm really glad to have him back. Commissioner Pennington, what are your thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I concur with, uh, all of your statements regarding, uh, Sampson Boxing LLC promotions and Mr. Lukowicz. Uh, I have no further questions.
Very good. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that pursuant to ARS five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight, and, uh, five dash two-two-eight A, B, E, and five dash two-two-nine, that we grant a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license to Mr. Sampson Lukowicz, doing business as Sampson Boxing LLC.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. We now have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. The motion carries two to zero. Looking forward to Sampson Boxing's upcoming events. Uh, and to B six we go, pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-two A, five dash two-two-seven B, and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh nine, the new license application submitted by Mr. Mark Lorenzo, doing business as USA WKF for a two thousand twenty-three outside sanctioning body license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Lorenzo's application, please?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would like to note that, that in the investigative memo that I shared with you, uh, it was stated as a, uh, renewal application. Obviously, this is a new application, so, uh, please disregard that in the investigative memo. Um, I will say that, um, obviously, the financial position is stable, as, as you saw in that memo, uh, but I would recommend that we table, um, this as Yansey, our, our AAG is no longer with us, um, and we yet to have a new AAG assigned to the agency. Um, so in order for us to get the proper, um, legal interpretation that we'll need for this, um, approval, I, I think it's best that we just table it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vella. Um, Mr. Lorenzo, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Hey, I, I want to apologize to you about this. This isn't a no. It's also not a yes. We do have to get proper, uh, legal advice in place before we can pursue this. Uh, I think we're gonna have to table this and push this to next month, but know that, uh, we're excited about your presence, and we're looking forward to talking about it.
Hey, I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, I appreciate your time, and I'm sorry we can't get it done today, but, uh, next month on April nineteenth, we'll talk about it. So we're gonna table B six, and we'll put you at the top of the list for next, next month.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh-huh. Let's push to, uh, C, our call to the public. Mr. Vella, is there anyone in the public who would like to chat with us?
Uh, yes, sir. It looks like, uh, Mr. Durlav, uh, has his hand up.
Yes, sir, please.
Uh, Mr. Durlav, you, you are muted. Yep, there you go.
I just fixed that. Uh, I apologize, gentlemen. I was told to attend the meeting for my amateur MMA combatant license. I was given an incorrect link originally, but I see that I wasn't on the agenda. I'm not sure where to move from here.
Uh, sir, so, so our apologies there. Uh, there, there was miscommunication. Do you have an upcoming bout scheduled?
I don't, although I had hoped to compete April twenty-second.
Okay, so you will be certainly on the next agenda, uh, in, in April. Um, that was just, uh, that was my mistake, and I do apologize, but we will include you on the next agenda, uh, so that you, you can be approved prior to your upcoming competition, okay?
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Vella, who else would like to talk to us?
Sir, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, we're making great time. If nothing else, uh, let's move to D, which is the call to the commission. Commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. Commissioner Pennington, anything you'd like to chat about?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I just would like a, a brief update on, uh, the protocols for our concussion testing. Now that we have the tool, I think, uh, that there was a, a group, including, uh, Commissioner Feinstein, that was going to, uh, begin to put together protocols on how to use the tool, and I'm just wondering if there's any update on that.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So we do, uh, the update is that, uh, fortunately, they, um, compliance metrics have been met in, in one area, uh, with the Department of Administration. Uh, we are currently, the vendor is currently, um, going through another, um, compliance component, uh, before procurement, uh, before we can actually purchase the software. Um, and so at, at this time, that, that is what we're waiting on, is just for the vendor to complete those items, um, and then we will convene. Uh, my goal is that once we have the tool in hand, uh, and we can, we can properly, uh, work with it, we can bring that, we can establish that committee, uh, between, uh, Commissioner Feinstein and some of our ringside physicians to actually, um, familiarize themselves with the, with the tool and lay out the best, um, procedure for how we can implement it.
Mr. Chairman, just one follow-up question. Mr. Vella, do you have a timeframe for when, uh, we will complete the bureaucratic process?
I could not say with certainty, sir, um, but I will find out and let you know.
Okay, that's great. Uh, we've just been working on this for so many years, and we've got something almost in place, and I'm just sitting here vibrating with, uh, excitement, uh, for us to get this done, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I agree.
I agree with those sentiments.
Uh, it has been a long time, and we are on the cusp. Um, so let's please make it a priority and get over the hump and get this thing in place. It's gonna be, uh, critically important, I think, for us going forward. But again, Mr. Vella, thank you for all your efforts. I know you have a lot of time and effort involved in getting us to this point. Let's, uh, push it across the finish line when we can, and if you need anything from us, please let us know.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, it is called a commission. Does the executive director have anything else he'd like to talk about?
Uh, sir, not too much to add. I would just say that, um, I'm pleased with the upcoming events that, uh, we have scheduled. It looks as though April, well, March, we're gonna finish out March with, uh, with another event, uh, two events, and then in April, we've got four events then, and so, um, we do have, uh, an upcoming boxing event in Glendale this Saturday, the Dell Soul, uh, boxing event. And so if you would, uh, join us, that'd be great, and for anybody on the call, uh, you may want to get out there. Um, and then next week, we will be having the, uh, Rough Muay Thai event. Um, that'll be the first Muay Thai event that we've sanctioned in quite some time. Um, and that'll be the first of, I'm sure, many more to come.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vella. Um, the Muay Thai event is in, remind me what venue that's taking place in. Do you know?
Yes, that'll be at the Celebrity Theater. It's, uh, it's a pro-am event, uh, in which, uh, Rough, Rough is the promoter. Um, the USMTA will be handling the amateur, uh, side of things, and we will have four professional bouts that will be, um, sanctioned by the commission.
Well, that's exciting. You say it's the first time in a long time it, I, professional Muay Thai might be the first time ever in this state that I know of, so that's fantastic. I'm really looking forward to that.
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you. I don't think we've had a professional Muay Thai event in Arizona.
Um, great things are afoot. We have a lot of things, uh, brewing, and, uh, pretty full schedule already for the remainder of the year, so, uh, fantastic things to come. Uh, Director Johnson, welcome. We're really glad to have you. Mr. Pennington, if you make it up to Phoenix sometime, uh, see if you can duck in and say hello to her. I think she'd like that.
Super. Are we looking at having a in-person meeting on the nineteenth?
Uh, perhaps, sir. If the misters are available, I, I am always, uh, happy to set that up, um, and coordinate, so, um, if you just... So, if you just advise me of your availability to meet in person, then I will certainly coordinate it.
I'm in. It's a great idea, Commissioner. If you can do it, I can do it. It would be just like the good old days. I've gotten tired of Google meets. It'd be nice to shake someone's hand before a meeting. Please, Mr. Bella, if you pursue that, I know there's a couple hoops you have to jump through, but an April 19 in-person meeting would be special and needed, I think.
Well, yes, sir. I will make sure it happens.
All right. Thank you. Speaking of which, hi to me is the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at 10 a.m. on Wednesday, April 19. We're looking forward to that, and it is subject to chain-based on a quorum, which leads us to the possibility of adjourning this meeting. There would need to be a motion for such.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. We're officially adjourned. Thank you all for your time. There are some great things coming here forward, and I really look forward to seeing you all soon. Take care now.
Thank you.